Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the August 8, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board. I now call this meeting to order. Let the record show that there's a quorum present to conduct the business of the board. At this time, the Chair calls upon Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Father in heaven, we're grateful that we could be in this meeting of the County Planning Board, and we're grateful for the opportunity to serve this county. We need thy wisdom, Father, as we consider this case before us and the amendments that are on the agenda, that we might be able to understand the needs of the county, the citizens, in respect to the laws of the state of North Carolina. Help us to be patient, kind, courteous, and professional in all that we do. And we say these things and ask for thy help, in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as written. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. There is no opposition, so the agenda is adopted and we will proceed with it. The next item on our agenda is approval of the July 11, 2022 Planning Board Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the July 11 Planning Board Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like sign. Again, no opposition, so the minutes are approved. The following is information for you people regarding rezoning changes to the zoning map. Zoning map changes reviewed by the Planning Board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 Land Use Plan, and the Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider recommendations of planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning Board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendations. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by this planning board. Each case on the agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the Planning Board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff's presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the Planning Board will hold a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case being heard by the Planning Board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. The public comment period is not a forum for dialogue or debate with the Planning Board. The express purpose of the public comment period is for the Planning Board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions regarding a request to change the zoning map. The chairperson will open the public comment period. Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. The chairperson reserves the right to set time limits for each speaker. In the event time limits are imposed, a speaker called may yield his time to another speaker. However, no speaker will be permitted to exceed twice the time limit imposed. No speakers are allowed to address the Planning Board twice during the public comment period. When recognized, each person signed up to speak will do so in a civil manner from the podium. Before beginning to speak, the chairperson will ask that you provide your name and address for the record. Unless otherwise directed, all testimony, evidence, or comments shall be directed to the Planning Board, not to staff or the audience. If you agree with an argument for or against a request to change the zoning map already presented by another speaker, please practice the courtesy of indicating as much when you are called to speak. Comments or outbursts from the audience are not permitted. After all speakers have been heard, the chairperson will close the public comment period. The applicant will then be given the opportunity for rebuttal. This will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. At this time, I call upon staff to present our first case, rezoning request 2022-17. Marzie, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is rezoning case 2022-17. It's a request for a zoning map amendment from residential agricultural to highway commercial conditional district. These are two properties located on Shelton Road west of Ellisboro Road in the Huntsville Township. Again, this is a conditional rezoning. As you can see on the location map, we are in the southwest quadrant of the county. The zoning map shows here that the majority of the property around this area is residential agricultural across the street from the hashed lines, which are the subject properties, is residential protected. Down towards the corner was a previous rezoning for highway commercial and neighborhood commercial. At this time, Lynn's notes say it's not developed. Environmental map, there is some water, of course, we're near the lake. The land use map has this said in our G1 district, which, as y'all know, is characterized by low-density residential developments. G1 land class should generally be zoned residential agricultural. Areas located in this transect are rural, located near strategic intersections where neighborhood commercial could be appropriate. We have those nodes in that district throughout the county. This is not one of those areas. Policies do not include the promotion of highway commercial uses, and the zoning request is not supported by the Rockingham County Land Use Plan. Although neighborhood commercial uses may be appropriate when located at or near the targeted crossroads, in this land class, the intensity of highway commercial uses is not supported. The prepared consistency and reasonable statement determinations, the requested conditional uses in the highway commercial district are incompatible with the character of the existing developments on adjacent parcels and in the neighborhood, and the proposed rezoning does not conform to the guidelines, goals, and policies of the Rockingham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan and future land use map. For that reason, staff has, in your packets, recommended denial of this rezoning request. That's the next thing. Sorry, this is probably a little fast, but if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them.
I do have a question. On the... That zoning map right there, hold it right there, the two light blue NCs, what are those? Are those the ones that are undeveloped?
Yes, sir. Those, from my understanding, were done in the early thousands or mid, early thousands to neighborhood commercial for, I believe, the intent and purposes of conditional use for boat storage and retail, I believe. That wasn't in the notes I was picking up from Lynn today, what he had prepared, but yeah, that was an early rezoning over a decade ago.
Okay. And the highway commercial, has that been developed?
It's also undeveloped. It's part of that original rezoning with those neighborhood commercials as well. It was some kind of mixed case at the time.
So is that whole three parcels intended for boat storage?
I'm not 100% on that, but I believe that was one of the uses requested at the time.
Question. Marzie, I can't remember how long ago it was, maybe a year or two, but we looked at something quite similar to this. It was commercial, and I thought it was at the corner of Shelton and Ellisboro, where the developer was asking to put in a convenience store of some kind and have some boat storage. Is this that?
It might be. I might have some of my dates wrong. Like I said, I didn't... I apologize. I didn't start this case.
You weren't here.
I'm just picking it up and running with it. It's my understanding that this came back as a rezoning at some point to do the retail part. I'm not sure when the boat storage part was first brought up, but...
It was, if I remember correctly, and I'd have to go back, well, it's a long time ago, but it's been over a year, I know.
Yeah, I believe the way Lynn talked about it was, that part of it was done when he was here the first time. So, you know, he's been gone for two years at least before coming back, so...
I remember sitting on it.
Yep.
But I don't know exactly the detail of how everything came about, because as my understanding, it was also rezoned earlier, so...
Also, how far is the site from the marina? Like, do you know the distance?
I don't.
Like, how close it is?
I don't. I know it's...
Quarter mile, half mile, third of a mile. It seems like to me that's something like that, less than a mile?
The scale of this map's at a fifth of a mile, so, and it's not on the map, so it's more than the fifth.
Okay.
Looking at the Google map, it looks like it's like over a mile.
Over a mile?
To the marina.
The requested uses seem to encompass a lot more uses than what the applicant is intending to use the property for.
Yes, sir. As often when we're looking at conditional uses, they take the existing table and whittle down from there, get rid of some of the more high-impact uses. I believe this is something Lynn sat down with them and helped them figure out. And they can speak more than that when they speak, but we try to stop the situation where we only allow one use. That's come to bite us from past decisions, so we try to make sure there's at least a range of uses that could be used, should it get rezoned, as opposed to pigeonholing into one specific business use, and then the property sits there and can't be used, should it not go through.
I have a question. Have you had any calls about it?
We've had about five or six calls. I believe one was an inquiry, the rest were against.
Any emails?
Not that I'm aware of. Do you remember, Victoria?
I haven't received any.
Of the calls, the for against, did they state what the objection was?
Victoria?
It would be traffic and safety-related concerns, and also they didn't feel that boat storage would have a place within their neighborhood.
Would or would not?
Would not.
So, traffic and noise?
Traffic, safety, and then just the general noncompliant with the surroundings.
Doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood, is what he's trying to say. That's the language, I believe, in the land use plan.
Phrased it.
Stated in the land use plan. Any further questions for Marzie?
I apologize not being boned up on the history of this one. It's just I got dropped this one in my lap this morning, so...
That's okay.
It's been a hectic day, but should you want any further information, I'd be more than happy to go grab it.
No, that's okay. Hold on, one last question.
All right, I'm going to ask you. Oftentimes, we talk about the targeted growth nodes in the county. How far is this from the nearest one, roughly?
Without having the land use plan in front of me, I believe we're several miles from the closest one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marzie.
Sir?
Is the applicant for this request present?
Please, sir.
Would you please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Jeff Knight, 564 Highway NC 68 in Stokesdale, North Carolina, 27357.
I'm going to request that, if you don't have a medical reason for your sunglasses, that you remove them.
Medical reason?
Then that's fine.
I have a shunt and a pressure relief valve, thrombin-induced glaucoma.
That's fine. That's more than information than I need.
All right.
And what is it that you'd like the Planning Board to know about your application?
Well, that property adjoins Duke Powers', there's no more development going down toward the marina, and it's probably 3/4 a mile above the marina. And we would like to put in a storage area, of course. We would not make a mess of the neighborhood by any means, do it in a neat and practical way. Mini storage, basically, and then as the land falls off, maybe boat storage, but that would be well below a retaining wall. We would try to hide everything from visibility of the neighborhood, plus the entrance. We would have everything built away from where you were looking in and seeing a row of buildings. You would just see ends, nice landscape to hide that in that neighborhood. And like I say, there's no more residential or anything going toward the marina, because that land adjoins Duke Powers' land all the way around.
I do. Mr. Knight, in the application, Louise is stated as one of the owners.
Right.
That's your mother. Has, is she like the original owner of the property, or do y'all own this together, or...
Yes. Trey's grandmother and my father are brother and sister, so we have those tracks. They traded an acre for an acre somewhere else.
So how long has this property been in your general possession?
Probably 80 years or longer, 70.
Also, if, depending on what we do with this, what is your... Granted, the campsite down is, it's a little wooded back there, and the houses are sitting in the middle of the lots. What is your plan to make sure that those houses are unobstructed, or they don't have to see the storage buildings and the boats and things like that?
We would have it completely fenced in, and the one lot that borders would be basically the only house that would, the way the road curves and everything, that would be against that. And the land does fall off, so it's not like it's up a hill or anything that way, but we were thinking of planting green giants, basically. We'll have the entire property fenced in with a loop drive all the way around its exterior, or strict word I'm looking for, parameter, and like a loop in, loop out, and then a small loop in the front for fire access.
And you're planning for the boats to be in the back? You're planning for the boats to be in the back of the property?
Yes, the land falls off, so we'd have a retaining wall for full-size boats, like jet skis, things along those lines, paddles, tubers, boat. We'd have smaller storage units for that as well.
Okay. I think that's my question.
Any other questions for Mr. Knight?
I have one. Mr. Knight, when you, looking at this list of requested uses, and I understand the reason not to make it a one-use zoning, I understand that part, but some of these could change the whole dynamic of what you're doing there.
We tried to go through the best we could with our knowledge and take out...
Right, I understand.
Anything other than what we were intending, storage, no churches, no retail. I thought, you know, we did the best we could with our judgment on that.
Well, but it does have, you know, and I understand that you didn't want to just narrow it down in case something happens and everything changes. I understand that completely, but this just runs kind of the gambit of, you're talking about storage units and boats, and then it goes to, you know, animal facility, kennels, farm machinery sales.
We took all that out.
Well, real quick, Lynn and them worked out things, and they took out several uses that are allowed in highway commercial. These are the ones that got left in, and there may have been some that still stuck out and scratched out. You're still welcome to scratch out suggestions, and I can get with Lynn to make sure this was the final list, but from my understanding, this is, again, it's our desire not to pigeonhole the property.
I understand that.
The applicants are fine with doing whatever specifically they want, so...
Well, but for our decision, we go with the information that we have.
Correct.
And there's a lot of things that can change the whole look of this. If it's this and this, okay. If it's this and 20 other things, it could be, it could change the whole look of the neighborhood, and a fence may not make any difference.
Right. But again, like I said, y'all are welcome to subtract from this list as well.
Well, I don't want to put restrictions on his property either.
Our main focus was the, I know we talked with Lynn and tried to go through this the best we could, and he said, "We left a car wash," and I'm like, "Well, you might clean some boats," so we didn't know what to do with that. You know, you might have to, because you transfer things from one lake to another, it's good to rinse boats off. I said, "We don't know, you know, maybe, but we're just looking at storage, and I'm not putting up with sanitizing dog kennels, I can tell you that right now. I know about that."
The other question I had, and I'm not familiar, I'll be honest, with putting boats on trailers and taking them from point A to point B and bringing them back, is going in and out of this facility and the traffic issues that, I know you can't pull out in a hurry with a trailer and a boat behind you, and I think that there probably would be some concerns in the neighborhood about traffic, especially when it's, you know, Blue Creek, that's a pretty popular place.
Ma'am, that's the last lot that Duke Powers owns, all that land to the marina. It's already a lot of boat traffic, and it's a slow...
It's a slow, okay.
It's not a major thoroughfare by any means.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, James? Sir, I'm probably the one guy that's all about property rights. I think that if you own property, you should be able to do, for the most part, what you want to do with it. However, I'm going to ask you to step back out of your role as the owner of this property and think about what you would do if you were one of the 11 folks who live on this, on Shelton Road, or Shelton Road, yep, that would have to, number one, see this property, the traffic part of it. How would you feel, knowing it just doesn't seem to fit?
If they don't see boats and trailers going down that road all the time already, I don't...
Well, not Shelton Road, Ellisboro, I understand, but Shelton Road...
Shelton Road is a Carolina marina.
What's that?
Shelton Road ends in the lake at Carolina Marina.
End of that is the marina?
Yeah.
Okay.
Marina's on.
That's where they're going?
That's Carolina Marina, at the very end of that road, and that's Duke Powers' land, all that green surrounding our property.
Got you, okay. I didn't understand that part, but still ask the same question. If you were one of those 11 folks who own property there and have a house there, how would you feel?
There's no houses past that property, so it's one straight across the street, and the way the land falls, it would not be an eyesore whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Knight? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
You'll be given an opportunity for rebuttal after we hear from other speakers.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'm going to open the public... First of all, is there anybody else in the applicant, associated with the applicant that needs to speak? If not, I'm going to... Are you with the applicant?
I'm with him.
Well, I need a yes or a no. Are you part of the applicant?
Yes, yes, I'm with that.
Okay, then you have the opportunity to speak now.
Yes, sir, I will wait until...
Rebuttal?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you're waiving your right to speak now. All right, thank you. At this time, I'll open the public comment period, and each speaker will have three I got to admit, I can't read the first signature, but it's Mineral Springs Road, Madison?
Trey Baker.
Oh, Trey Baker. Thomas Oakley?
That's not why I'm here.
That's not why you're here?
No, I'm signing.
Okay. Are there any other speakers for or against this application? There's none on the sign-up sheet, so... Okay. Do you need rebuttal, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Then we'll close the public comment period for this case and move on to discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Cindy.
I have a question, please, and it may be that staff answers this. It looks like that Mr. Knight is pretty settled on what he wants to do, and again, I understand you don't want to pigeonhole someone that they can't use their property. It goes down to the marina. He wants to store boats, and, you know, it looks like something pretty conducive to the area, and because of the way the land drops off and Duke Powers owning everything. My question is, why did staff suggest denial for this?
Again, as it's laid out here, it's not conducive with the land use plan, and regardless of the topography, it still is a residentially zoned area with residential houses, and it doesn't meet the G1 land class uses for highway commercial. In our G1 land class, we do allow for neighborhood commercial, but these types of uses aren't allowed in neighborhood commercial. Highway commercial would be the lowest intensity that they could do the uses that they're looking at, which is why they're going for highway commercial conditional, but it just, we'd have no choice, it's not consistent with the land use plan. Our hands are tied by that.
Okay.
Cindy?
Thank you.
Why don't you bear in mind that our decisions have to be consistent with the provisions of the General Statute 160D, the Land Use Plan, and the UDO. So the Land Use Plan is one of the controlling documents that governs our decisions.
And if I can add to that, there's nothing in the 160D that says you can't approve something that is inconsistent with the land use plan. What it states is, if it is inconsistent with the land use plan, the land use plan's automatically updated, should you choose to do something that is inconsistent with the land use plan. But we as staff can't make that recommendation.
Understood.
That's something for the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners to do.
I have a question along those lines. If we, if we take the requested uses and narrow it down to fit the request, and I know ideally, we don't want to do that, that's not... I'm just wondering if this is the way to thread this needle, because you go down Shelton Road, all you see is boats all year long, and campsite, campsite is where probably the nicest houses on that road are, and they're sitting far enough back from this that, I'll be honest, I just don't, I don't see a problem with it. But I also understand that we have guidelines that we have to follow, and we have to, you know, if we start doing this too much, then we're opening up... know, if we start doing this too much, then we're opening up a can of worms, and I really don't want to do that either. So is the compromise somewhere, because, you know, this clearly, this usage for this land fits the neighborhood if you look down the street, and what everybody, I mean, this is Blues, Blues Lake, so, and there's some highway commercial just up the street from it. So I'm having a hard time trying to figure out what to do here. I'm wondering if the compromise is narrowing this one down so far that we can accommodate them and let them do their business and move forward.
And that's entirely up to y'all.
Okay.
I don't think the requested uses have as much to do with the decision as conforming to the land use plan. That's my opinion. Dylan?
Do we know, I haven't had the privilege of going to the marina, does it have boat storage?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Is it, is there a need for this storage?
Well, when you go down Shelton Road at the marina, you'll see all kinds of boat trailers lined up down there, and there is boat storage there, at least the last time I was there, there was.
Yeah, I don't think that there.
And it's growing, that area is absolutely growing.
My concern is, we looked at a similar case like this on the Readsville Planning Board, and there wasn't any residential protected, which does, I'll get to that in a minute, but there was highway commercial all around it, and the industrial was, the industrial park was behind it. But what you had was residential, I mean, residential spaces, but that were like three and four plots in between the highway commercial, and they were going to use this for storage too, for cars. And I made the argument that they should have approved that one. However, here, it doesn't make sense to me with the residential protected there. I mean, we're, this is what we're supposed to be protecting them from, is this. I mean, those people moved there for this, and, I mean, do we know if that's where the nose came from, was that particular area? Do you know, who was it that called and said that they were against this? What places they were?
The one person I talked to lived on Shelton.
Possibly.
But the rest of the phone calls, what's that?
All of them on Shelton.
Victoria says all the calls she received were all on Shelton as well.
On the opposite side of the road or beside them? There is that one house that's.
We didn't, we don't get people's addresses when they call us, they just tell, you know, I lived on Shelton, dah 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 dah, we don't pry.
Okay.
Well, there's only one house on the south side, so.
Yeah. It was various people, so I'm, I mean, we're assuming it's anyone who was on the way there.
And we do, for your clarification, we do have to consider the number of people that called or emailed objecting.
Thing with the other case, no one came to protest, or no calls were made, there was a car lot on the other side of the road. It made sense for that area, and if we approve this and then we get complaints.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I would, this is not new residential, and I would find it hard to believe that people would move there with, because this, you know, Carolina Marina's been there for years and years and years, and they would think they're not going to see boats, and they're not going to see people going back and forth. It's like moving out to the airport and then calling and complaining about noise from the airplanes. You know that this is a marina, you know that this is what, you know, and a lot of people move there because of that. They want to see the activity and the recreational, and that's coming this way pretty quick, that people want to go close to home, they want to go someplace, the camp sites, everything that's coming toward Rockingham County is toward staying close to home.
And we do need more of that storage, but I wouldn't put a storage building next to a residential area either, even if it was in, right beside a new development that was bringing in new people. It's just for their convenience, if they want a place to store their boat, they already have one at the marina.
There's already boat storage in that area right near residence, right near.
That are not.
The road just up Ellisboro Road.
There is other boat storage areas in that.
Or is this place is right next to houses, and, but they are on Ellisboro Road, which this Shelton Road is a high-traffic road, it's very high-traffic.
Okay.
But.
Okay.
For us as a staff, the large part of the inconsistency really comes down to not just the storage of boats and outdoor storage of vehicles, it's the mini warehouse as well. So, you know, that's where we're looking at the inconsistency with the plan, why it had to be highway commercial, things like that.
I'm okay with it.
One of my problems is if you don't limit some uses, and if it's resold, and you can put a car wash on it, because that's an allowed use, that is.
My point.
That is a problem that I would, you know, that's one, I think this is what they alluded to right over there, I think, you know, you've got to kind of maybe narrow this down a little bit, and.
Y'all can narrow this down a little bit further. You know, without us tabling this and going back out and coming back with a reapplication, we as staff can't table, narrow this down. We've submitted the packet as is.
Right.
So that's the application, so it's up to y'all to narrow that list down if you want to narrow it down further.
Hey, Julie, can I ask if, so if you narrow this down completely, are you, is there any concern about a precedent?
No, and I'll tell you, I don't have, I think sometimes we are going to come upon these odd duck requests, and.
It is by a lake.
Yeah, it is by a lake, that's correct. So I think that every once in a while, we're going to come across these things that are, while we're trying to remain as broad as possible so that we can fit the UDO and the land use well, and so that we can, you know, do this growth thing like we need to, I think every once in a while, we're going to come across this, where this piece of property has been in this family for 80 years, I think they want to do something with it. I think that it's not inconsistent with what happens in that area. And I know that people that move out there, you can ride down Campsite, and people have boats sitting out in their yard. I mean, it's that kind of thing, so I wouldn't think that people would have a problem with the storage. And I get that there were four calls, but everybody's nimbie, I, you know, I also don't have a problem narrowing this one down. Now, we've, I think we've had some really good discussion about it, and there's still some concerns, but I think, again, to thread this needle, I think Matt's right, we've got to, we got to narrow it down so that it stays, we keep it within the flavor of the neighborhood almost. I would be more than willing to do that. Now, to leave kennel open, no, I don't think that's a great idea for this. I think this, because they're asking, they are really trying to fit what this neighborhood is with this piece of property, I got to give them props for that, or at least give consideration for that.
Well, I think having the property for as long as they have, they know the neighborhood, and I would think that they would know what would work there and what wouldn't. So they're not going to put something there that's not going to be a help to the neighborhood and a help to their property.
And quite frankly, a car wash, nobody's going to wash their car. You know, they understand, you're right, they understand what this is.
I'm a little confused, because I'm looking at the GIS, and it shows that the one that was sold in 2008, the other one was sold in 2021. What does that mean? An 80-year, what does?
Family changed, well, I would have to ask.
They bought it from another person. He's got his hand up.
Yep. Mr. Paul? Mr. Michael had his hand up to answer that question. Oh, Paul.
What now?
Again, would like to answer that question.
Okay. You got to come up here. And since you're going to speak, you have to give us your name and address.
Third, 1668 Mineral Springs Road, Madison, North Carolina.
Okay.
So the property is being, the one acre that is next to Mr. Knight's is, my father is in the process, it's in all three of our names right now, my mother, my father, and mine, and not all of mine yet. It's why I say in 2021, it's not, it's never been sold, it's just been renamed.
Changed hands.
It's deed-ing, this is a deed-ing thing. And when, anytime the deed changes, name changes on the deed, it's listed as a sale.
Good, thank you.
I mean, if you want my recommendation of narrowing this list down just to proceed this move along, because y'all aren't discussing that, and that's kind of what we need to be discussing, I can narrow that list down to you in a heartbeat. No, I don't have any way of doing that. It's not in the slideshow. And the last time we tried doing that, it didn't work. Well, I was just going to run down the gamut, I mean, I've already scratched off almost everything on the page, so.
What's your recommendation?
Keep boats, recreational vehicle sales and service, keep the dwellings of single-family and two-family just in case, mini warehouse, mobile food vendor, outdoor storage area, and drop it down to short-term rentals and signs on premise.
Sounds reasonable.
Well, you know, if someone wants to put a taco truck.
Taco truck.
There you go. Scratch everything else out. Okay.
And then just part of the general operations, if someone does need to rinse off their boat and everything, like, you know, make sure there's no hydrola coming from the east side, things like that, that just being the normal operations of a storage yard, it doesn't have to be a car wash, so.
Car wash is a whole other ball of wax. Yeah, I agree with you.
Like I said, like I said, this got dropped in my lap today, so.
If you're all in agreement with the revisions that these requested uses, we'll need a motion to revise the list as, or approve the list as revised.
Can we do that in the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve case 2022-17. A motion to recommend approval of this request zone and the specific parcels to the zoning district requested in the application, contrary to the consistency, wait.
Yes, contrary.
Contrary to the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the board agenda packets submitted during the rezoning request presentation, and as may be amended incorporated into the motion, to be included in the minutes, including the noted conditions. And the noted conditions will be, strike all uses with the exception of boats, recreational vehicle sales and service, campground, recreational vehicle park, dwelling, two-family duplex, mini warehouse, mobile food vendor temporary, outdoor storage area, non-residential, short-term rentals, sign on premises. Did I get all of that?
And dwelling, single-family.
And dwelling, single-family.
Oh, wait, no, I had that one scratched out.
We're in the middle of a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, let me take that back. No campground, recreational vehicle park, okay, I'm sorry, strike that one. So let me go back over that. Boats, recreational vehicle sales and service, dwelling, single-family, detached, dwelling, two-family duplex, mini warehouse, mobile food vendor, outdoor storage, non-residential, short-term rentals, and sign on premises.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve zoning request 2022-17 with the recited conditions, recited changes to the conditions. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. All those opposed. On a vote of six to one, the application is approved.
Recommended approved.
At this time, the board is being asked to consider text amendments to the unified development ordinance, and Marzie, we're going to give the floor back to you to explain these. I guess we'll start with 2022-02A, Table 41.05-1, dimensional standards table.
All right, yes, sir. What we have for you tonight is, of course, several updates to the UDO that we've, we've pretty much come across a few hiccups as we've been going through this last year of the new UDO, and we knew that would happen. This is a living, breathing document. With the dimensional standards table, we're finding some difficulties with the public surveyors, developers, if they're trying to do a minor subdivision, I'm going to go ahead and put the table up. And that is tiny, sorry. You know, they're always asking, what's the minimum lot size, and, you know, trying to through them, tell them it all depends on environmental health and choosing density, and et cetera, is becoming problematic. So what we've kind of come up with is recommendations for minimum lot size for anything in a minor subdivision, that's one through five lots, anything that hits the major subdivision level goes to density calculation. We think that's a fair and easy way to process this for the general public, for us internally, and as people move forward with, you know, family subdivisions of land. So what we've recommended here is minimum lot size for individual lots or minor subdivisions to be in the RA zone, 35,000 square feet, the RP zone would be 30,000, RM and MHD zones would be 25,000. That goes along with kind of our density builds for those zoning classifications, as well as giving a minimum lot size for people to work with, so they're not trying to do random math, trying to figure out how much to give their son who just needs like maybe a half acre of land for a home.
All right, a question of importance right here, and we'll start with RA, 35,000 square feet, is that taking into consideration whether the property is supplied with public water and sewer or septic and?
No, all the minor subdivision is all just based on the type of density, the level of density the zones were designed to be. RA is a low-density, RP is a low to mid-density, and RM is a mid-density district for us. So we went with lot sizes that were comparable in other jurisdictions for those comparable zoning classifications. It's to keep it, you know, more open space in the RA district, RP has a little bit tighter space, RM has least.
The 35,000 seems, you know, if your density is 1.7, that means you have maybe two, and 35,000 square feet in it, how many acres is that?
It's less than an acre. An acre is about 43 and some change. So what we've done is we've tried to keep it to the level of low-density, middle-density, and a little bit less than mid-density.
I would just assume like you would take the 1.7 and you would say, okay, that's.
And that's become the issue, is we can't really get to those points with everybody because it doesn't always mesh with everything they're trying to do. There may be water, there may not, there may, the land may not be able to sustain a septic system, they might need to do more. In some instances, the land may be ripe for it, and they can do less, is what we're finding, and we're trying to, basically, we're trying to fix the issue we're coming across with people having to do all that math, having to get the surveyor out there before, just knowing that I want to give my son 30,000 square feet of this property as a minimum, and they build from that. They're having to do a lot more legwork and more cost upfront to figure out our density calculations on these lands. And we're just trying to, you know, we're doing a lot of these single-lot subdivisions, and that's a lot of effort for something that really should just be as simple as minimum 35,000 square feet.
Well, I guess I'm having a hard time, Ken, how am I getting from six dwelling units per acre?
Yeah, and that's what I'm trying to say, though, is this, this is minus that stuff. Once you get to six property subdivisions, we apply those density calculations instead.
Okay, got it, okay, now I'm with you.
If they stay in the minor subdivision range, they're doing these land sizes.
I got it, okay, thank you.
Anywhere other questions on the?
No. What else do you want us to know about this?
On this table, we're also looking at the minimum lot width, building line, a lot of this table was built with a thoroughfare plan in mind, and we don't have a thoroughfare plan. So a lot of these elements, you know, local roads, state-maintained roads, it's becoming difficult to keep up with some of these subdivisions that are coming through, because they'll start off with, and it may be a local road, but then they're going to give that road to DOT, and we've created non-conformity. So we feel that just creating a baseline of property widths, and you'll see this also with. with front setbacks, but with a minimum lot width for building line, RA, we've got 100, RP, we've got 50, RM, we've got 50, and MHD, we've got 50. And again, that's just plopping a decent-sized home on those properties and maintaining the open space that we're looking to maintain in those zones. But what we're running into is, let's say a major subdivision comes in, and they start off with 40-foot wide lots on a local road, and then they give that road over to DOT, which is a state-maintained road, and it should have been 100 feet wide. You know, so we've, we are encouraging non-conformities when we, when we do that, as opposed to eliminating non-conformities, which is what we're trying to do.
Yeah.
So this, this resets that, that baseline of what the minimum lot size should be, with the expectation of, it doesn't matter if it's gonna be a local road or a DOT road, we're not gonna create a non-conformity when we create a subdivision. The same thing with the front setbacks. You'll see that we've got changes for, you know, had local road, two-lane road and three-lane roads for the, the minimum street frontage. So we've added, you know, made that 50, 40, 40, 50, and that's just at the actual connector to the street, so the lot building width would be 100 in RA, but it only has to have 50 at the front. And then to the front setback of that, 35-foot for RA, 30-foot for RP, I know I'm doing a lot of numbers here, 25 for RM, 25 for MHD, again, goes in line with those widths and building lot areas for those zoning classifications to actually bring in why we have different zones in the first place. The different density, the, and I say density, not the units per acre, but the actual use of that lot, how much that lot's being used, how much open space is being left. We did have some safety concerns, though, with some of our roads, so we did propose a 50% increase into the required setback for high-speed roads, just to build back that lot some more.
So that puts them at 50-something feet.
Yeah, roughly. If it was an RA zone, if it was a RM zone, it'd be 37 and 1/2.
So to figure out the, say the RA is 35, and then you'd add 1.5 times 1.5 to that to see?
17 feet.
Yeah, so it's 52, yeah, so it's 52 and 1/2 feet.
Yeah, give or take.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Currently, they're all 35-feet front setbacks, so really, it's not changing much in the RM district, by, but maybe two feet, and that's only if it's on a high-speed road.
Right.
You know, in the RA district, most people already have larger acreage, and they're already like 50, 70 feet back in the first place, if not 200.
Right.
So it's not really impacting a lot of our existing properties. What it does would do is allow us to better manage moving forward, and again, stop those non-conformities from happening, and give each zone its actual character.
I'm good with that.
Any more questions on?
No.
Okay. Also, you'll notice at the bottom, there's an RC zone. We have an RC zone, we didn't have any dimensional standards for it, so.
You're good.
No, it was completely left out of the chart, so we added it. It's a.
They were before.
We didn't have anything before, so it's, we sort of mirrored the neighborhood commercial, but still brought it back into that rural character of not being as impactful to the neighbors, so it reduced a lot of the, the lot size that could be used. And you'll notice that we also, our first RA, I mean, RC zone was last month approved by the Board of Commissioners for Mr. Chavez, so we, we didn't even have an RC zone yet, so I think that's why it got left off the table. And then we added in the table from the watershed district, just for ease of reference, there's nothing changing on the watershed table, it just stops us from having to go to multiple pages, and we can hand this handout to the public when they ask, and they've got all their information.
Okay.
Any questions, concerns?
I don't believe so. Let's move on to 2022-2B, campground RV parks, development standards.
The former UDO required a special-use permit for campgrounds and RV parks, so there was a lot more oversight when they were being developed. Now that they're, they have development standards and they're desk review, some things we feel need to be addressed, maybe some more consistency in their requirements, bringing in some of the old special-use requirements and attaching them as development standards. So what we've tried to do here is add the minimum 30-foot private right-of-way to be dedicated for access. Access roads must be two-lane traffic, the minimum of, minimum ingress, two points of ingress and egress and everything from state and roads, and then also that these are subject to the non-residential standards in the, in the UDO, so they are treated as commercial sites, which would include then your buffering, your landscaping requirements, all, your lighting requirements, so that becomes still even less impactful to the neighboring uses. And that's what we're proposing for those.
Okay, I've got a problem with number seven. Minimum 50-foot emergency vehicle turnaround. Correct me if I'm wrong, but in the TRC, has it the minimum turnaround been increased to 70 feet?
I'm not sure. I thought Lynn checked with the fire marshals before you wrote this part of it.
70 feet.
And we can double-check on that one as we move forward to the Board of Commissioners.
I think you're right.
So can we, can we just change that to?
Well, we can't without checking with the DOT standards first, because we don't have the legal authority to change it to DOT standards.
Well, it'd still be the fire marshal's access.
If DOT or fire marshal says it's 70-foot.
So then, why, why can the language say to, to comply with DOT?
You can just check it and change it.
Yeah, okay.
And we could just rewrite that to, any dead-end interior roadway must comply with current code, fire, fire code for emergency turnaround.
Yeah, that's, let's, I like that, because what that does is, if it ever changes, we don't have to come back and redo this thing.
I'll rewrite that to must comply with current.
OT and fire marshal's dimensions, emergency vehicle turnaround requirements. Fire apparatus is not getting any smaller, so they need more room for turnaround.
Gotcha.
For the change of the 100 feet to 50 feet for many exterior property line, is there already like a buffer thing in place for campgrounds that were?
The, the commercial standards would require some type of landscaping to be within that 50-foot, that would do the visual screen, and hopefully some noise screen.
That's, that's what.
And that could exist in that 50. What we're finding with a lot of the requests are the properties people are trying to use at 100 feet from all edges of their property line, it's shrinking the property to, I guess, to an unusable point, or probably a non-return-on-profit point.
It's conditional, just like whatever the, whatever they want to do, it's not anywhere written where it has to be a buffer.
No, this, this setback is basically, it's buffer, but the buffer, buffer that you're thinking of, like as a landscape buffer, is in the commercial requirements under Article 5. So they'd have to do some type of at least 15-foot wide screening alternative of vegetative or masonry construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, one other question about the access roads enabled. Sometimes RV parks have a one-way, so it loops around, comes out. That, that statement there says that you can't do that, that you have to have.
A minimum of two-way.
A lot of times, you have to have two lanes, so a loop around is not gonna work anymore? Like Lake Reedsville's a loop around.
I mean, you can still loop either direction at that point.
No, it's a one-way.
We wouldn't allow one-way, I mean, you do two-way loops, like any other loop road and would, would allow for. These are, like, again, these are some of the conditions that we were applying from the old special-use conditions that older parks had to comply with at the time.
Wasn't a single lane allowed if you had a loop? I understand, I think it was.
Well, for, for campgrounds, it is, but it's gotta be 20 feet wide. You can't, if you recall the.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the Cheek property that we denied the application to, one of the stumbling blocks for the applicant was the cost of changing the road width from 12 to 20 feet. And that, the new UDO has in it that that's the minimum road width for one-way. But preferred is 30-foot wide dual-access.
At this point, I mean, for discussion, I mean, if you want to allow for one-way loop roads and whatnot.
If it's, if a 20-foot was allowed, I mean, it was.
Well, yeah, if you only have one road in and out, then it needs to be 30 feet wide and turnaround and everything else, because you can't turn a 35-foot RV around in a 50-foot circle either.
I'm, I'm good with leaving it at 30 feet.
Okay.
Two lane or one lane? That's what was up.
Well, 30 feet automatically gives you two lane.
Well, yeah, so, but y'all just wanted to leave it at two lane?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, does it?
When you think about pull-throughs and stuff like that, the loop actually facilitates when you do a pull-through, and then, you know, I've been in eight RV parks in the last couple, in the last month, you know, so the, it's really helpful to have a one-way road, then you can pull in, and then you have an exit from those pull-throughs. And, and so I think, you know, to say that you, that you have to have a 30-foot two-way road is a little bit challenging for particularly, you know, the large fifth-wheels in, in Class A RVs and stuff like that. We're not talking about, you know, if it's tents and stuff like that, I don't think that matters, but in the case of the larger RVs, you know, they're about eight feet wide, and so the 20-foot road, foot road is fine, but if you have a two-way, I think that may be difficult for them to, to slot as many RVs spots in there as they could with that requirement, being the only option.
Well, you gotta admit, keeps overcrowding, though.
Personally, I think a 20-foot should be allowed if you've got a loop.
Say that again, sir?
I think a 20-foot should be allowed if you, if you've got a loop through.
If you do a loop through, make it 20 feet.
Well, keep in mind, we're talking about right-of-way, not road width at this point. We're requesting, we're requesting a 30-foot right-of-way. That's what you build the road within, not limit to limit of pavement.
Okay.
If you go with the 30-foot private right-of-way, that allows you to put a 20-foot wide road in there, which number six, access roadways must enable two-lane traffic, and that was the stumbling block we had with the Cheek property.
We can just.
The UDO is clear on it, it's gotta be 20 feet.
But we can just nix number six if you'd like.
Yeah, let's, let's take out number six, because that seems restrictive.
Then we're gonna get right back to the same problems we had with the Cheek property.
Well, at the same time, it's my prerogative to bring this to TRC for review and approval if we get to sticky wickets, because it'd be a commercial operation at that point, at which point DOT could weigh in, we could weigh in, engineering could weigh in, and make that decision for them.
On a, on a case-by-case, depending on what the site plan is?
According to the UDO, I can do it case-by-case for commercial properties.
Okay, yeah.
That being said, we could always still sit there and amend this statement to access roadways must enable two-lane traffic flow unless, unless this is a loop road, unless a loop road is provided.
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine with the current discussions we've had about roadways and everything at the TRC meetings, NC, DOT, or the fire marshals going along with loop roads anymore. I think they're pretty much a thing of the past. But if you want to take it out and approach it at the TRC level, that's fine with me. I'll be at the TRC meeting, so.
I'm just spitballing recommendations as we go along, so, I mean, like I said, we can amend the statement to include a loop road provision, we could amend the statement out of the regulation, it's.
Why, why don't you take six out and not, and not really say anything about loop until it becomes a problem, and then fix it? Does that make sense?
Well, no, we can't, we can't do that.
Or can, does it, does the TRC handle it?
Well, the, the TRC, the NC, DOT is part of the technical review committee, as is the fire marshal and a whole bunch of other people. In the outside possibility that this road could be taken over by NC, DOT, they are not gonna allow a loop road. I can't imagine the state of North Carolina taking over a loop road.
Well, we're talking about a road that's inside of the RV park.
It doesn't matter.
Actually, this is the access road.
It's the same, it's the same as a street.
Okay, okay.
In order for.
30-foot right-of-way, they're gonna pull it up to their standard anyway, they have to, when they take it over.
Yep.
I mean, they.
So it's the access road to get to the RV park?
This is the access road, so any roads that access the RV park, not the internal roads.
I think you're confusing internal roads with the.
I am, I'm absolutely doing that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry.
All right.
Then the wording's fine.
Okay.
We're probably best to just leave this the way it is and not put in anything concerning loop roads and do those on a case-by-case basis, as they germinate, if you will, from an access two-lane road. So the road into the RV campground, it'd have to be two-lane, but then you could have one loop that went all the way around, so you come out on the other side. Now, that would have to be done by us on a case-by-case basis.
And the 30 feet wide is, is beautiful.
And all of the internal roads would have to be 35, 30-foot wide right-of-ways.
Yep.
Good?
Yep.
Moving right along.
I think Cindy has a question.
Just one question, real quick, but anything prior to this is grandfathered in?
Yes, legally non-conforming.
Gotcha, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I'm not getting anyone that has just one little run-in.
Then let's move on to 2C.
2C is, we have provisions in our ordinance for private road, county road, and then state-maintained road. The county road pretty much is obsolete, no one's using it, people are actively trying to avoid it and find loopholes away around it. So our proposal to this point was, if it's not being used, and they still have to be a state-maintained road for three to five, for four and five lots, and then after six lots, it has to be a state-maintained road, we're basically saying it's a state-maintained road for four through, four lots or more, or state-standard road, I should say. But we went a different direction with it and tried to couple this to our subdivision rules. Minor subdivisions, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, six or more is a major subdivision, so we're requesting to remove county roads from the ordinance and allow private roads up to five lots, and then after that, all state, all state-standard roads, six lots or more.
Yep.
And plus Lynn put some corrected grammatical language throughout that as well.
We've, we've talked about this too at TRC.
Sounds good.
All right. And then 2D is, as a primary use, boats, recreational vehicles, and outdoor storage, it's allowed as a secondary use, which means we also have a lot of non-conforming businesses in the county. This brings this into a principal use category within the rural commercial, neighborhood commercial, and highway commercial districts.
I think what we need is a motion to approve these text amendments.
Since it's not permanent, what do you need, a limited amount of time for them to be stored?
That's a good question. I believe the, the intent here is our outdoor storage rules later on, which are in our code enforcement sections, prevent you from just leaving vehicles forever. This is intended as, you know, this obviously isn't, they don't just, basically, it's a rental slot that someone can park in, and it's not always that person's, is the, the short-term, non-permanent part of that. There's no developmental standards, we're not gonna tell a business that they have to move people out every 60 days or 90 days or something like that. The intent is that it's not a salvage yard, or something like that.
All right. Again, if you recall the Cheek case, and Dylan, you must have been. Again, if you recall the, the Cheek case, and Dylan, you must have been here for that. At one point, it was discussed about permanent and non-permanent location of those.
Trailers.
Classic trailers that wanted to be up there. And I believe the rule at the time was they've got to be changed out every 90 days.
Which means she's just going to move them.
Well, in flood zones, we do require it to be changed out every 180 days if someone had RV campground or something like that. And in some areas, we do like rodeo roundups, make everybody move their thing for a day and come back. So, but yeah, this is not utilized in that type of short-term.
I move that we approve these amendments as stated.
amended.
Excuse me.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve these changes to the unified development ordinance as amended. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, like, sign. There's no opposition, so the changes to the UDO are approved. Do we have any new business?
I don't, unless y'all do.
Do we have any old business? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion has been made, seconded to adjourn. All those in favor? Good night, everybody.